About the 2017 Sleepy Hollow St. Patrick's Day Parade and the dinner.
Great. First of all, it's great to be back in this room. Looking at that day, it's time to say to one of my former students, Phil.
Really?
Steve Benassi.
Oh, nice.
He was a great woodworking student back then, and as you could tell, he's a, I know I teach him all that, but he's a master craftsman.
Nice.
Anyway, thank you for including me tonight and putting me at first.
Sure.
The 21st Annual St. Patrick's Parade, Sleepy Hollow Parade is happening this year, and Brian, you know, and I appreciate your participation in past years. What I'm doing is going around and trying to get even more support, more participation from the other municipalities. Even though it's called the Sleepy Hollow Parade, it's become more of a River Towns parade, and it's one of the biggest parades now in Westchester County. And it's funny, someone's probably saying, what are you doing up here? You're not Irish. You know my father, you know I'm not Irish. But I was asked to be an aide to the Grand Marshall about five years ago. It was a great honor, but when they called me, I said, I think you, you know, I have two Rs in my name, not one R in Longington Park, on the Italian background. But the nice thing is that aides are picked because of their participation, their volunteerism, how they've helped their communities in many, many different ways. So I was, I felt honored. And little did I know that once the parade was over, they were going to grab me and say, well, listen, we really want to expand this parade even more to the River Towns, and we know that you have a lot of connections in all of River Towns, and would you join our committee? So I did. And at this point, we've grown every year, participation by the municipalities has grown. And I'm just here personally to give you a personal invitation to participate, not only through all of you to march behind your fire department that comes out of your, or also other clubs that you want to invite, any organization that you think would like to participate. The bigger the municipality parade group, the more present is. And not only that, it's a lot of fun. I mean, it's just a lot of fun, as long as it's a rainy, it's a great day. So this year, first I should say that we tried to invite or to select an aide from each municipality. And this year, Joan Armstrong is representing her. And I know she'll have a lot of people who'd like to support her. We're in the parade with this Lashen Dinner, and that dinner, it will be held on February 24th. And if I'm going to talk to Joe Marchino, maybe we'll get a few people to attend that because it's a fun night with a great Irish band, and it'd be nice if he had a lot of support. The parade is March 12th, Stepoff through 130, right at Main Street in Tannery Town. And so anyway, I'm here just to invite you, and I hope I can see you then. Unfortunately, I go left a little here.
I think this is-
Nice to see you. Brian, congratulations.
Thanks.
Also on the board, I'm seeing guys on the day, this is a first, all right? So thank you. If there's any questions-
I think this is either the fourth or fifth one, I think, that we've participated in. And it's been fun every year. It's a, we've got, I've gotten a small but hearty crew each year to march behind the, or Bill's Verity's banner, which is, as you said, is right behind the fire department. But yeah, I'd love to have anybody on the board. You don't have to be Irish, you just have to have-
Well, I was told everybody's Irish that day.
Yeah, exactly. And I'm a, because the rest is German, we somehow, you know.
I thought that's why they call-
It's honorary. Doesn't hurt. But so it's a, it's a really fun day.
It's all right.
And it's, it's not a long march, and then you get some fun after and before, so if anybody wants to come out, please contact me, and I'll reach out to some of the local organizations.
We'll look forward to seeing you marching.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thanks again, and have a great meeting.
I think unfortunately, the dinner, I think, is during February breaks, I think, away.
Might be. But it would be great.
Absolutely, we'll be there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. Announcements. First, is public hearing to consider the de-mapping of a paper road running through a lot of land at the end of Hermits Road? That's for February 16th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in Village Hall. Did you want to explain a little?
Yeah, it's, it's really a technicality. The paper road is entirely on the parcel of property that the village has been owned. So it doesn't really need to be done, but part of, if you recall, the agreement we entered into with Tim and Macon, who owned the whole parcel, was that we eliminated the paper street. So it's, it's, it's not used, it's-
It seems like an odd thing to have a public hearing on. I mean, you obviously, to get rid of paper roads, you need to have a public hearing, but it's not, it's like, it's, it seems a little out of left field, but it's actually got about almost two years of history now.
Yeah, yeah, it's just really a technicality. It's, it's, it's either Donnie and I are crossing a T or both.
So I'll make a motion, it's February 6th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in Village Hall. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. As far as correspondence, the only person-
Can I? I have an announcement. I just want to make, call attention to those residents on Sycamore and Dogwood that got the notice about the Con Ed work tomorrow, which is supposed to begin around 9:00 AM and might go until 1:00 AM on Friday morning. So what I wanted to point out was just that if you do find yourself that this is going to go on longer than Con Ed actually expects it to be done, much sooner, make use of the library. The library is a nice place to go. You can bring your kids there to do their homework, you can, there's Wi-Fi there, you can read a book, you can hang out, stay warm, and just, I'll bring that up because it is supposed to get a little bit cooler tomorrow night, and if your electricity is off, your heat is probably off. So good luck. And I spoke to Con Ed today, and they said most likely they'd be done much sooner than that, but it's really a matter of how difficult it is to find the electrical fault that's under the street.
Exactly right. This is the, the area they were talking about, this is kind of the downside to underground wires, is there's much, many fewer problems, but when you have them, they're much harder to find. So I'm hoping they find it, it's right at the end when they first open it up.
Yeah.
Murphy's Law says it'll be at the other end, but still, hopefully, I think it padded it a little bit.
Well, luckily, Thursday is also a late night till 9:00 for the library, so-
Which that will. So hopefully it'll be over, and back on, the power back on a long before that.
And if you have anything in your refrigerator, keep the doors shut, you know? That's people-
Yeah. Or worse, put it outside of the stoop. But thank you for that. Any other announcements? The only correspondence we received was related to the, the public hearing. I'll just wait on that. Public comment? No one's jumping up, so I'll move to the consent agenda. Anyone have questions on that? Just a minute.
No.
Otherwise, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Village Board meeting from the regular meeting held on January 5th, 2017. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we will get to the continuation of a public hearing, consider a local law of any code with respect to solar energy equipment. Mary Ann, did you want to kind of update us on where we are?
Yeah, just the changes since the last time.
Sure.
There were two changes made, not to the guidelines, but to the, to the local law. There would, because there was some concern expressed that, by ARB members in the discussion, that often the contractor for the solar panels will come in and say, I can't do anything else about it, and what, and then the ARB found that they didn't have a lot they could do there. So what we did, I mean, because it's kind of a hobby, this is, is the homeowner, not the contractor who's responsible for trying to comply with the guidelines, I added a section to Section 9-12, which are the Board of Architectural Review's rules for solar energy equipment, and it reads, the homeowner must demonstrate, the homeowner must, well, first of all, it comes after the section that says, in reviewing building permits for solar energy equipment, that ARB should follow the solar energy equipment guidelines adopted by the Board of Trustees. Then, the homeowner must demonstrate to the Board of Architectural Review that all reasonable options have been considered to achieve compliance with the solar energy equipment guidelines, which I think should address that, that issue. And then, and then the other change made to the local law was to add a fee schedule. The fee schedule for just regular building permits doesn't work. So, so that's in Section 10. So applications, for instance, solar installations or replacements, there's an $85 application fee plus $300 for systems up to five kilowatts, 550, five and less than 10, 800 for systems above 10 and less than 20, and that $800 plus 253 additional seven kilowatts, and then $75 for systems completed. So that's the-
One quick word on that, just so you're aware, you're aware of where this came from. First of all, the other, the other River Towns will also be adopting this type of a fee schedule. I think Hastings has already done it, and others will. But the reason that we're going to a kilowatt-based fee is that the traditional metrics of using building, construction costs don't necessarily apply because of these lease situations, and it's, it's a, it's just an unusual industry for that. So this will actually capture the building permit fee more correctly, more completely strict.
More kilowatts is larger array anyways, so-
Right, right. So it's catch revenues that we're not catching currently.
So there's part one of the changes. Those are in the, the local law, but besides the local law, you're adopting guidelines. And the only change over the last set of guidelines that you handed, I just passed them out tonight, so they weren't, they weren't on, on, it's a fairly small change. It's on page two of what I handed out to you. There was an issue about pitched roofs requiring three feet around the edge and along the ridge line. And so that's at the top B, it's Section 4B. On a pitched roof, well, on a pitched roof, it has to be set back, it did say three feet from all edges and the ridge line, but it's been changed to, it has to be set back in accordance with the current uniform fire building code, because apparently that does change with, with the fire code. The same change was not made for flat roofs because that four feet was put in there for aesthetic, comply with the uniform code, so that wasn't changed. So that's the only change in the guidelines, in January 17.
On that particular item, Mary Ann, they still have to conform, a larger array on a flat roof still has to conform to the building and fire code, the state-
Right, yeah.
-fire code for, for access alley, access corridors and stuff like that.
These are just the ARB's guidelines.
Okay, okay.
They still all, they all have to comply with it, with the building department's rules, which include the uniform fire and building code required.
That's it? Okay. As I mentioned earlier, we did receive two pieces of correspondence, one from the Ozzy Park Property Owners Association, and one from the Indian Historical Society. Would you rather read your letter?
I would.
Probably better.
Yeah.
I'll pause it all around places.
First of all, I did want to, as I did in my email, apologize for requesting, keep the public hearing open. I know you've been working on this for a long time. The timing wasn't, didn't work out for us in terms of having the board discuss it, so thank you for that. The members of the Urbanist and the Star of the Society Board of Trustees are committed to the preservation of the historic integrity of our village center. Thanks for your support. The establishment of a historic district in 2013 was a major step in this process. However, as you are aware, state and national designation does not provide protection of the historical resources or impose restrictions on development within the historic district. It is local zoning laws and preservation legislation that offer the greatest protection. We write today in reference to the proposed public law with respect to solar energy equipment. Certainly, we believe that the issue of clean energy is a critical one, and we support initiatives to encourage the use of solar power. However, we hope that it would be possible to shape the installation of solar equipment in a way that would mitigate the negative visual impact of future installations within the historic district. We realize that the board has been working on this issue for some time, and believe that the proposed guidelines that the ARB shall follow in their review of installations are appropriate, but would ask that the issue of reversibility be included. Ensuring that solar energy equipment installations would not permanently alter or damage intact historic details would provide added protection to our historic buildings and recognized landmarks. We strongly believe that rehabilitating historic buildings is both fiscally and environmentally responsible. These are certainly complicated issues, but how we balance the goals of preservation and modern development will set the course for our future. Thank you for your ongoing concern and efforts to preserve the integrity of our historic buildings. And I would ask, has the question of reversibility been addressed or discussed?
I know we've discussed it. I'm not sure we addressed it.
It was circulated, it was circulated-
Yeah, I circulated some, some language about it, but the board has to discuss.
Yeah, we haven't discussed it, but we can.
Well, the, the place where it comes up, to my mind, I've been thinking about this a lot, because I think it's a great issue. In the code right now, we do have a statement for E, which, part of it says that the equipment shall not damage your obscure character-defining features such as dormers, chimneys, roofline. You know, we're thinking, like, coping woodwork, whatever kinds of stuff, although it doesn't say that explicitly, but it really should give the implication that it's character-defining features. However, so you can't really, you know, cut a notch in something, the problem with reversibility comes in with, currently, when you take, you know, the rays sit on legs, right? They're up off the roof. So you have to get into the roof fabric itself, and that means you're either cutting through tiles or, you know, slate or asphalt shingles. When you remove it, if you do remove it, it means that those things are in fact damaged. So I don't know how you solve that exactly if you don't have any spares around, you know what I mean? I don't know if you, how you get around that. But the other issue, to me, that's the bigger one, is reversibility is actually a much bigger issue when you come to the new generation of solar equipment that's coming out, which is basically, I want to call it more-
Replace, you know?
Yeah, zero elevation or zero, I'm not sure of the right term to use, but it doesn't sit above, in fact, it is the roof fabric itself. So they, you know, it's been shown as fake slate, fake tile, and a fake, obviously fake shingles, so that it actually would replace some degree, although you'd still have to have the lower membranes, you know, water-resistant membranes. So I don't know what that really means in terms of the near-term future, because-
Well, I think, and perhaps I'm not the best one to-
Yeah, the mic would be good.
Sorry. Perhaps I'm not the best one to answer this, but I think when we talk about reversibility, it does not mean that it would have to be reversed, but that if someone chose to reverse it, it would be possible to reverse. So I think when you talk about the damage to the important architectural features, that's critical.
Right.
The question of the roof and the roof tiles, well, I think down the road, if someone did put those on, a future owner could choose to reverse it. I, I think our big concern is that there isn't damage done to those architectural features that are integral to that building.
So is the language in, in your opinion, is, and maybe it's not fair to ask her opinion, but-
I know, really.
You know? From a legal perspective, I don't, I don't mean that, that way, I mean, from a legal perspective, so this is Mary Ann's judgment, of all. Is the, the-
Is the language there sufficient?
Is the language sufficient, or is it clear enough? In fact, I keep wondering, should that be called out as like an F, just pulled out? So you have a general equipment installed to appear regular in shape and symmetrical, and then as a specific clause, so it could be really seen as what it is, it says, you shall not damage any, you know, architectural significant features of the building as you're installing this stuff?
In any way that could not be reversible.
That's different. That's very different from what you just said.
Yeah.
And to say, to, to, what you basically are saying, which is where I thought you were going here, is that any, any installation that might not be reversible would not be allowed.
No, no. I think Mark was saying, if we added it to the section, or maybe I'm wrong, that said you should not, that none of the damages should be damaged.
Right.
In a way that was not reversible.
No, I would say, I say, I don't like that.
It can't be damaged, it can't be damaged.
It can't be damaged. No, I was, I was talking about just pulling that phrase out and making it, highlighting it by making it an F, but if Mary Ann is, thinks it's-
Yeah, there's no problem with that.
Because I think this makes you choose an eye and make you-
You don't have to imply anything, it's very-
But it doesn't address reversibility.
Right.
Because we're saying you can't change the, the significant fabric of the building.
Yep.
But we recognize that the roof fabric is going to change, have to change if you install something.
Right. But that could be reversible.
Well, it might be, but I wonder if we need to say, I mean, if you buy a house and you don't like something that somebody, the previous owner has put in, you know, it's your house now, you can reverse it. So I, I'm not sure there's anything in this law that says, and all future owners of the building must maintain the solar panels, right? Wouldn't that be?
No, in fact, we talked about that, and you really can't.
You can't.
You did, it's sold out, right? You paid for it, then it goes with the ownership of the house, but otherwise, if it's a lease system, it goes, I don't know how it goes, actually, I've never got that answer, is how you pass it to the next owner.
You bought, you had a 10-year lease, and you moved after the first year, you take it away.
I guess it's, I guess it's tied to the utility service-
Must be, yeah.
-for that meter.
But I, I think that maybe it seems stronger, forget the reversibility, but you can't damage this, you kind of, your, your prohibition on it is, I think it gets, gets us past, it's better than the reversibility thing, because you don't have to worry about reversing it because you can't damage it in the first place.
And the other concern I would have about adding reversibility language, there's a cost to taking it down, presumably, and I totally defer to Mark on the specifics of this, but I would not want to build something into this code that is a potential cost factor to somebody who's installing it, but they also have to consider how much would it cost to take it down. They may not want to, the next owner may want to, but I think the integrity of the building, we put a lot of protections in here.
I think that, I keep coming back to, the new technologies are getting to the point, they have less and less impact on the structure of the building, on the roof structure, but you still have to apply it or fix it, somehow make it so it withstands storm, for instance, you know? So it's got to be affixed to the roof fabric somehow, the layering. I don't even know, I don't know how, how long it will take before we get away from that, but, so my concern is that people may end up doing something like removing the old, old slate and putting in fake slate, you know, so that could happen.
Mm-hmm.
Now, if someone was doing that, they may actually be smart enough to store the slate in the basement somewhere.
Well, in actuality, that happens now. There's, there's nothing that says somebody can't remove a slate roof and put in a fake slate. I, I think it happens pretty frequently. Slate roof is pretty expensive, a lot of people cannot, and, and most of those old slate roofs are in pretty poor shape.
How did they repair the roof down at the train station?
I don't know.
Do you remember any of that? It doesn't matter, I just wondered if I could source that slate.
The only thing I have to say, just one minute, if I could, ask Earl, if you don't mind, if there's anything on that term of reversibility that he would like to bring up, or do you feel that we're pretty much covering it?
Well, I like, I, I think adding the F with the, you know, calling out not destroying the architectural details or whatever that is.
Just so you understand, it's already in the law.
It is.
And I understand, to put it in a separate paragraph would-
I think it's just for visibility, I think it's just really-
Separate bullet to just kind of emphasize it.
Make it a little, okay.
Yeah.
I don't know, is anything, Earl, that you-
Hello? Did I hear that the reversibility is already in the law? I didn't see it. Is that what we talked about the other day with the historic district committee?
No, what, what's in there is it, the language that's in now is that the equipment shall not damage or obscure character-defining features such as dormers, chimney, roofline.
Okay, that, what was that?
That's already in there.
Is that item F, or?
Well, right now, it's included in, it's in E, it's included in E, but it'll be called out separately in F, just because it's kind, it's kind of lost in the paragraph about how it should be configured on the roof. But what, what, the, the part of reversibility that's not in there, it, if you take off roof tiles, if you have to disperse roof tiles in order to install the equipment, that wouldn't be covered, as long as it's not, you know, affecting corners of the, something else. There's no provision to, no provision preventing against that.
Right. And reversibility, as I know it, is possible anyway. I mean, should an owner decide, or if the panel system were to be obsolete and, and one wanted to replace that system with something that is much more efficient, it's obviously reversible. You can remove whatever you put on and, and replace it with something else. By the way, Mark, slate, slate is like dentistry, you can actually replace pieces of slate, so if there's a lot of slate roof repairs that are done that way. I, I don't, I, I'm wearing, I'm like a three-headed creature, I've got so many hats at this, at this meeting tonight. First and foremost, I would like to speak as, as a homeowner, as a property owner in the historic district, and also, of course, I'm a member of the historic district committee and a member of the Board of Trustees and a member of the historic society, so I do feel like a three-headed creature here, so, but thanks to the support of this board and the previous boards, many of us have worked for over a decade to give the historic district designation in the downtown area. And we're surrounded also by really significant historic landmark buildings, not, not necessarily in the historic district, but all of them, serving historic character to the village. And we would, I think, be very appreciative, and even as advocates, myself, I'm an advocate of, of alternative energy, of renewable energy, and I don't think that they're mutually exclusive, I don't think that if you are an advocate of historic preservation, that you are necessarily, you know, against solar energy equipment. I think that there can be a balance there. I like a lot of the guidelines that you've already discussed quite a lot and made available for approval. I think that, you know, when we looked at it, we thought that it's, it's a very workable document, and it does give the Architecture Review Board a good criteria for reviewing and considering applications for solar equipment. So it doesn't, historic preservation doesn't have to exclude, or doesn't have to prohibit the use of solar. So if, if I could just ask the board to consider an item F that might be, that might have a little bit more robust language in it, that if you are working in an historic, on an historic building, a building that is a contributing building in the historic district, or if it's a recognized landmark, that, that we consider, that we avoid solutions that require or result in the removable and permanent alteration of historic fabric or loss of significant character-defining features of historic structures. If this, if the language that we're talking about tonight isn't adequate, doesn't really get to that point where it's that provision, then I would appreciate if the board would further consider more protective language.
Well, it seems like we actually have a broader protection, because it doesn't limit it to historic buildings, it limits, it basically says it about all buildings.
In that respect, I think it's less broad if I, if, because I think the way- In that respect, I think it's less broad if I, if I, because I think the way Earl read it, historic fabric, I think, could mean a slate roof, could mean, could mean clay tiles. So it is, it's something different. It is something different than architectural features, which right now you can't damage. Do you hear it that way as well, Jim?
Yeah.
Well, character-defining features, we do call out right now.
Yeah. And I think that extending it in that way to the fabric of the roof is going to really limit how.
Mark, could I just respond to something Mark said? You said character-defining features want to include the roof. I don't believe that's the case, the way it's written.
No, no, I didn't say that it would include the roof. I just said we had character-defining features.
No, it's right, but not the, when the fabric of the roof, I think of.
The actual roof itself.
The tiles, right.
And that's going to be hard.
And it's not covered.
Yeah, because any any installation is going to somehow affect the roof. Even if it, even if it looks like fake slate, it's still going to affect that.
You've got to take the old roof off, most likely, to get down to the membrane.
And is is that what you really mean, Earl, the actual roof? Is that, I know, kind of all said that you replace slate and things like that.
Fabric in this, in this case is a broader term. It's more to do with the overall character-defining features of the building. Well, I guess, you know, cornices and 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 trams and that kind of stuff, moldings and such could be disturbed, depending on what it is that you are installing, what kind of system that you're installing.
Are you saying you think it should be allowed, or it's just inevitable that it would be disturbed?
I imagine, I can imagine someone purchasing a suit, excuse me, and and having an installer convince them that they have to cut through this cornice or they.
Yeah, that's what we.
From the electrical conduit down there.
That's what we intend to prevent.
They wouldn't get the permit.
Yeah.
Well, is it, this is such as?
Yeah, you know what, I would just add to that, such as dormers, cornices, chimney roofline. I think cornices is a, I mean, because that's.
I think cornice is.
That's come up a lot. I mean, it's, I would say that is a such as, but it just clarifies.
Yeah.
Because the thing, the issue with cornices has come up more than once, so I think you just.
We had also made a note, thank you, we had also made a note that we we should probably avoid installations that alter existing roof lines or dormers, because those are also character-defining.
That's on here.
Okay, that, you did get that.
The dormers, chimneys, rooflines.
I have some old notes, I'm sorry.
I like when you agree with us, let's go ahead.
Well, the per- permanent removal of of historic details is, is something that would be terrific. We could achieve that, some protection against that.
I agree. I mean, I think that's what the, that's, to my mind, that's the intention of this so-called F.
And it's not even a reversibility thing.
We want you to do, we're sorry, so you can't reverse.
I don't want to belabor this. I'm sorry. But I did listen to the last public hearing, and I did listen to the members of the ARB saying that, in fact, they could not prevent, and just, you just said, then they won't get the permit. But my impression was that the ARB felt that they could not deny that permit.
And therefore, there's been a change.
That's.
Change wording that gave them more leeway and made the decision.
That the homeowner, we wanted to get the homeowner in here, not just the gender. So the homeowner has to demonstrate to the ARB that they have made every attempt. That the the system they're choosing is, as opposed as they, has to follow them these guidelines, or they've made the best possible attempt to do that.
So so they can't say, you know, that's a little more expensive than what we wanted to know?
No, no.
Okay.
If they can get a really cool deal on neon green panels, no, no good.
See, the 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 language in, not in the guidelines, the operative language says that if there's an application for solar energy equipment, it has to be approved, plus all the other kinds, has to be approved or disapproved by the Board of Architectural Review. And then this says, these are the standards. I think they're feeling, I think the concern of of the ARB, they did say, we feel like we can't disapprove it, but that's because they would have contractors coming in and saying, there's nothing else we could do, and they felt like their hands were tied. And that's why we added the language about, the the application isn't just that particular contractor that comes in, it's the responsibility of the homeowner to.
Because we do think that.
So they could disapprove.
Absolutely.
Not you, not according to the usual set of standards. We're making this, we're keeping this different. But they can, they can.
Based on not meeting these issues.
Right, based on what you put in there. So you could, you maybe couldn't, or you could, would disapprove it because the homeowner, homeowner, he hasn't shown that they've taken all measures to install it in a way that minimizes its visibility from the street. That would be a grounds for doing it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And all over, not just in the historic, when we wanted to have these applicable.
But what they can't do, what this doesn't permit them to do is say, we're going to deny it because it's going to destroy the character of this neighborhood. It's no longer a ground.
That's basically what we, that's basically the whole purpose of this, is to take that piece of the.
But within what you've established, it should not be able to destroy the character.
Glad you agree.
Because it meets all these other standards.
It's what you said before, it's a balance. And we've been very clear since the first time we discussed this in in public of wanting to really encourage the use of solar energy while recognizing all of these other issues and the value of the historic preservation.
I think what we what we ran into was the ARB said, they're 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 voting that any front-facing solar destroys the character of the neighborhood, period. So that's kind of, that's why we've had to actually do all this. If it was kind of like, you know, if this one didn't look good, that one's okay. Or whether like 0 for 6 or whatever it was, anything front-facing destroys the character of the neighborhood. So that's why we stepped in and said, we're going to change the group of guidelines that say, you can't just say, say, any front-facing solar destroys the neighborhood.
You have to look at these.
And also, it's good in terms of appeal, because now this criteria that the ZBI can look at are, you know, they're not quite as quantitative as maybe some of the other kinds of variances that they deal with, but at least there is a list that they can see what, and and look at, how the conformance with each part of it. So it's not an arbitrary set of guidelines that's just picked out of the air randomly, but it's.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a piece of teeth to it. And and I think, you know, I think the ARB also said, well, if you're going to do this, just take us out of it and let I do it. We think they still have a very crucial role because of all these guidelines. These aren't easy, you know, and I think that we pass them with it because we feel that they're very important.
Right. I I I think probably one of the things that strikes you in looking at this whole thing is the difference between guidelines and regulations. And does that make a significant difference in terms of what the ARB can and cannot rule on? And I I don't know the answer to that, in terms of, for example, someone appealing to the zoning board. Can that person say, well, these are only guidelines? Well, the the thing is, the operative section in the ARB law says that in reviewing building permits for solar energy equipment, the Board of ARB shall follow the solar energy equipment guidelines adopted by the Board of Trustees. Okay, so that should cover it.
Where I think other guidelines wouldn't have that in the code, so they would just be more of a. So in other words, like if you had paint color guidelines, that we just decided as a board that we all like light blue, but we're not going to make a regulation. We could have a guideline that, you know, use these eight colors, and you think the best paint are these as a guideline, but it wouldn't be in the code, so it wouldn't be this.
Yeah, I mean, theoretically, you could have these guidelines and listed in the code. You could say that, you know, in reviewing these building permit applications, the ARB shall consider the following, and list things, like the planning board does for set plan group, or there's not like, you know, it's it's not all black and white. The thing is, recognizing that the technology is changing. Every time you wanted to make a change, you'd have to enact, you know, you have to enact a new law, a law, you have to have public hearings, whatever, you want to change the guidelines, and the board's not going to do it in private, because the guidelines, you can have a meeting and a resolution, and the board can vote on it. It's, it's, it's more flexible. And it's, because it's new technology, it's important to have it flexible enough to to update it. Or also, maybe it's kind of even if they're not working, but the guidelines aren't.
Well, that's the other thing, that, you know, down the line, you could.
Bring this.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So I just want to be a devil's advocate one more time, just so we can address this. Is that clause C that was added about the homeowner, is that sufficiently strong? Because what happens.
Look at me, I mean.
No, I understand, I understand. I'm going to give you a scenario. This homeowner comes in and says, and I know we talked about it, but I just want to go through it one more time. The homeowner says, sure, I've done everything possible, and and my contractor doesn't offer any other option.
That's, I think this, I think the intent of this is to give the ARB, then, the ability to say, we're not asking about this particular contractor. You are tasked with exploring options.
All reasonable options.
All reasonable options. And this is exactly, this is exactly to address what the ARB brought up.
That's fine. I just think we have to make sure the ARB understands that interpretation, because on one level of reading, someone could just slide in and, you know, the dog ate my solar array, but, or whatever, you know, options. But so, you know, as long as they understand that that is, in fact, gives them a fairly heavy hammer to come down on, then that's good.
For what it's worth, what we did mean about this one, whenever the ARB was there, was comfortable, comfortable with it.
Please, Earl. Hi, thank you. I just wanted to look at item four under guidelines in the draft, where it says, solar energy equipment may be mounted on a building or any section of the roof of a building, provided it meets the guidelines and implies the following, and get me the list. The Secretary of the Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Buildings on the national level has just started looking at this because it's so new. And their, their guidelines would be more strict than these guidelines in that you would not be, you would be discouraged to mount the solar array panels on the principal smoking-facing roof, but you you can mount them on other slopes, on other roofs of that structure that is not as visible. And I know that we probably don't want to get to that point here. I can see how this is going. But when you, when the language says that it may be mounted on a building or any section of the of the roof, to me, that would imply that I can mount my solar array right on the front elevation of the, of the building, can be mounted on a building or. And I I know that there are, there is technology right now that allows you to mount solar panels vertically on the base of the building. You'll be, you'll have whole curtain wall systems of solar panels, so. I I I'm afraid that somebody would interpret that as being able to just put it on the front of any historic building and not necessarily on the roof.
That's actually a really good point. I mean, I I never noticed it until now.
I never.
Because all of, if you look at everything under four, A, B, C, D, E, they're all with first roof.
So just, let's, should we just take that out?
It may be mounted on any section of the roof of the building.
Yeah, I think so, because I don't want to start opening up what kind of worms of facade mounted. And then, you know, because most people, if they mount them on a facade, they're going to try to put an angle on them to get the best solar incidence.
That's what they do.
And then, you know, you've got these.
The big awnings.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea, take that out of the building.
Yeah.
Someone will pre-suffice for that, but let's make sure we're clean.
The face of it, it'd be okay.
And then it does, it does say, the next five says, to the maximum extent possible, all solar energy equipment other than the collector shall be located in the house or on the side of the roof of the building, so it covers that. So you can get the other stuff on the side of the building.
I'll interview the Parsley Park Property Under Association owner. Dear Mayor, Mr. and Board of Trustees, thank you for the opportunity to appear at your work session last Wednesday, January 11th, under your invitation to comment on changes to Irvington Solar Energy Local Law and Governance. The public strongly urges the Village of Irvington to uphold the existing section nine dash six of the Village Code, as well as the past practices, which gave the Architecture Review Board discretionary authority to review and deny applications for front-facing solar panels on a case-by-case basis. Under section nine dash six, the Village of Irvington has vested discretionary powers with the ARB to approve or deny applications related to one or two family dwellings, signs, walls, or fences. The ARB is Irvington's de facto guardian for maintaining and upholding the architectural character throughout the village and historic neighborhoods. The same architectural character that attracts families to purchase the high-priced residences in our communities, in our community. It's also the same character that motivates and justifies the existing residential homeowners to make extensive and costly capital investments to maintain the architectural significance of their property. By stripping the ARB of its discretionary authority on such intrusive architectural element for front-facing solar panels, the BOT is placing its individual views on energy and the environment ahead of maintaining, ahead of maintaining the architectural significance that has made Irvington the quaint village that it is. BOT's proposed action creates an inconsistency, sets a dangerous precedent, exposes those of Irvington to future legal actions. The ARB would be allowed to regulate some architectural aesthetic elements, but not others. Imagine walking through historic artsy park and seeing all the street-facing slate roofs now covered with larger black solar arrays. This change would be an aesthetic transformation, completely consistent with Irvington's past practices and will be, and will of its voters. The board urges the BOT not to make this radical change to the ARB's authority. The draft changes to the Village Code and guidelines do not describe the impact that would fall on our village and its architectural character. There is no explanation provided as to why front-facing solar panels should be an exception to a well-settled ordinance of practice. The BOT's solar energy guidelines and the official record avoided any mention of the ecological benefits and/or cost savings that are assumed to be the impetus for permitting front-facing solar panels. Be employer to maintain the power you have consistently vested in Irvington's ARB, group of trained professionals who have for years constantly upheld the architectural aesthetics in the village and its residential neighborhoods, making Irvington the sought-after village that it is. Please email me or call me if you need to reach me. Respectively submitted, Nicholas Seymour, President of Parsley Park Property. Thank you for that. You know, I think we've all stated many reasons why we think it's appropriate, so. Any other public comments? We do have several changes.
Yeah, I I suggest.
And I'd rather not vote without Connie being here.
You're not making a rush, and Connie's been the the other side of the coin on this argument, so I'd I'd rather give her a chance to speak again before we vote, so.
Yeah, there are, there are, we should also have a secret resolution.
Okay, so we will keep the public hearing open for another, who knows? We had four people tonight, maybe we have eight the next meeting. You say we're going to vote, people want to show up. So we appreciate you guys coming and, you know, the thoughtful discussion.
Yes, this is what I think a public meeting should be, to have really helpful inputs that resulted in, you know, a significant change that you caught, you know.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. First, please, preach that, email it forward.
Okay, that's, that's.
It's an appointment of an alternate, the Irvington Architectural Review Board. Almost seems ironic. I'll add it here. That's not it, that's not it. Here it is. This is for Claudia Schrader. She first reached out last May and has been interested in joining for a while. So the opening here, we thought it was a good fit. She does work as an architect. I'm not sure if she's got registered in New York, but she does work as an architect, so she has experience.
And we've talked to her about the exclusionary requirement for, so she has to be working.
Yes, I don't think she's ever had a, any clients in the village, so she's, she works, I think it might be near a shell, or she works on the other side of the county somewhere. So she hasn't been at any of the, I believe.
Okay.
Resolved to appoint Claudia Schrader. Resolved to appoint Claudia Schrader as first alternate to the Architecture Review Board for term expire December 2017. I'll make the motion, can I have a second? Second, call in favor.
Aye.
We have several other candidates we're working on. We have two more opening, spread alternates right now, so. Discussion of next steps to the comprehensive plan update. Keep marching on. Dave Smith, say it again, keep us marching. So I'll kick it off. I think, I think the biggest update is we did hear from everyone on their preference. Larry, you have a guest line before I, before I asked for it. So I can kind of read out kind of our, again, it's like, I don't know.
Nature's like a handout.
Perfect. Yeah, like, it's like you liaise on assignments. If you're unhappy, we can all horse trade and move around, but I took a shot at it. Some of the, some of the areas only had one person said they were interested in it. So they kind of got that one by default because no one else said they were interested. And then we had a couple where everyone seemed to be interested, so we just did what we thought was best.
The list, by the way, the way it's presented here is not, the names next to, and working groups that are listed next to each name are not in a particular order of preference or anything like that. Most people didn't, didn't give me an order of preference, just listed out every series that you know, be interested in serving.
So what are we doing here? Are we cutting out some, or are we, or is this the list?
This is, this is the list for discussion.
This is for discussion, right.
So on this list, Janice would be assigned to code modernization. Larry would be assigned to downtown. He'd be sustainability, since he was the only one who signed up for it. Connie would be historic Broadway.
Historic Irvington.
I would be Broadway. Rick would be code modernization. Pat would be Broadway and Bruce would be downtown. So that's kind of how we threw it out there. If people don't like their assignments, then you're happy to talk about it, but otherwise we felt it was kind of a way forward.
Yeah. Well, the good news is that everyone at least was assigned to something that they said that they were willing to.
Yes.
So we didn't have to force anybody.
We didn't draft anybody.
We didn't have to force anybody into a committee.
Historic Irvington and sustainability only has one.
Yeah.
Which we know, you know.
We knew?
Well, we knew that one committee, two committees, we're going, just by math, we're going to have all we want.
Okay, so I have one question, just, I just want to be clear because, and then you, time we can talk about this later, but code modernization, when I read the actual description of it again this time, it seemed to me to be missing something. Maybe I forgot where we got, again, we talked about, I thought we talked about a broader issue in code modernization than just basically dealing with Airbnb and multiple MF zones and things like that, but...
Yeah, there was, there's also something in there about updating the, like, what, let's see, the environment.
Martin, I think Wallace ran it.
I think that was out there, wasn't it?
And so nothing to do with, or is this under sustainability where you would look at things relating to how's, how's, system efficiencies, you know, that kind of thing? Things that would be coming forward, some of it would be coming forward through the New York State Building Code updates, but I thought we talked about there were some aspects that could conceivably not be part of the state building code? I don't know. I mean, I'm not sure where I'm...
Like, what kinds of things?
That was a good question. I'm trying to think about, right now, we have, I don't know, there are issues, we're dealing with solar energy right now, but issues with geothermal systems, I mean, I don't know, I think that's become effectively just a fairly straightforward permitting process, engineering review and permitting, there's not anything else that's going on I'm not sure if I know at this point. I'd have to think more, but it just seems like I was surprised that we eventually, we essentially seem to be focused more on, you know, for want of a better word, housing and social issues for code modernization, and is that all that we're...
I don't think there was housing, if, well, actually...
Well, extracting MF zone characteristics.
Yeah, but those are things that have come up along the way. One other thing that I think that might relate to the Airbnb and Uber is just home occupations in general, you know.
You mean home office updates or...
Yeah, it's defined pretty narrowly.
Yeah.
And the code was permitted and, you know, it was a customary home occupation, well, what is that anymore, you know?
Well, that definitely has to be...
Maybe you just leave it at that, but I don't remember that we discussed that, but that's certainly the sort of thing that would, could come up in code modernization. But I also had the sense that those were examples, but it's not the only thing you might, might discuss in code modernization. I would think when the group got together, they might come up with other things.
Correct.
Or things might come up at the public meeting, the first meeting.
Yes, exactly.
Yes, but it's also not meant to be the entire code.
No, I understand that.
It's, it had, I mean, I think, my understanding is what the, what the working group is going to focus on is what about the code needs to be amended or changed.
Discreet issues, yeah.
Right, not the whole.
Right, no, no, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So just, no, I don't want to go on that committee. Just because somebody might come up at the meeting and come up with one other thing, you know, and say, if the code doesn't address this, or this is really outdated, it doesn't make sense anymore.
So it's really much more broad brush than just the several examples presented in the...
Well, no, I don't think it's necessarily more broad brush. It could be. It could be. Because I, I don't think you want to say, like, Janice, you just want to look at the code.
They'd be correct by statement, what I meant by broad brush, I mean that...
Oh, the man did, maybe?
Well, they can look at anywhere in the code and bring forward where they think there's issues, so it's not like, it's not segmented into a very specific topic per se, but...
Yeah, I think the examples are...
You're not trying to rewrite the code with a new editorial voice or something.
Right. No, I think the example of Airbnb is, that's something that's, that we see happening now, and we, and our code doesn't address it, so, you know, it's, it's an example, but I think we could do it the other way and say, you know, look at the code, it's addressing things that don't exist, or, you know, something like that too, potentially. It's not as important now, but if you're regulating, you know, code lines, we don't have any, it doesn't really matter, but...
That's pretty, where your vision is.
Surface animals.
Well, I don't know, yeah, I don't know if we've got the one that you can't, you know, wear a bathing suit, walk down the street or something, I don't know. At some point, I did go, I went to the...
Were you allowed to?
Yeah, I mean, some of these things are all, but, but that's not the point of this. The point is to, we're sort of addressed.
Yeah, I think the, in, in one of the earlier lists, we did have updating environmental provisions of the Village Code under the code modernization.
Yeah, it wasn't...
I think that dropped, yeah, what I attached, I think that dropped off there, but I was...
Yeah, yeah.
Going back, there's a, there's a January fourth or fifth listing that I was...
Yeah, because I had asked if that was there, and it was, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that's the thing that cut my, that's why I thought that the scope was narrowing on that particular item that cut my eye, but, yeah.
Hey, one other issue that's much more basic than this is, for the items, sustainability historic Broadway, where there is only one representative, yeah, I'd be pretty open if someone wanted to be, you know, a second person on those, and you're, like, you have additional meetings, you know, I, it's, you know, that, that's fine too, so.
I would certainly be open to someone...
And if no one else says it, I, no one else raised their hands, I'd be, I'd be happy to go to sustainability more.
Yeah, Brian, hey. Hey, my man.
Okay.
Solid.
I'm bringing the character of the village, so. So I will, and again, if someone else wants to work on Historic Irvington, you know, you don't, you don't have to raise your hand now, but, you know, I don't think there's a prohibition against two people, you know, being on the second one, so.
I wonder if Rick would be interested. Oh, you want, you want a trustee?
No, it doesn't have to be, it's someone from our...
From the, from the committee, so maybe one of the...
Yeah, maybe, maybe Rick.
I'd like to listen.
Yeah, he didn't risk...
List it, if I, I don't necessarily think you should assign Bruce to December.
If he doesn't have time, exactly. So maybe, he's the only one to list it, or instead that we switch him to Historic Irvington also, and then someone else from downtown, since everybody seems to like downtown. You know what I mean? Like, assign him to Historic Irvington, he's only on one, and then, you know, Janice or, I guess Janice...
Well, Connie's not here, you can assign her.
Yeah, exactly, she's on all of them. So, yeah, I mean, that's...
Yeah, I'm still open to that.
Actually, I'm sure those, that she'd be very interested in both.
Yeah.
I'm not, I can't...
Hey, I'm not going to, I'm not going to sign her up for additional meetings, but...
I think that's actually a good solution.
I think moving, I think moving Bruce to Historic Irvington, and then adding Connie to downtown if she wants to go to additional meetings, just enjoying herself on vacation.
Well, I would want, want at least one other person not downtown with me.
Yes.
Connie?
I'm happy to come.
Or Janice?
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm, I'm kind of losing the...
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you want it to be on downtown, then, basically, I was saying, move...
Oh, okay, because you moved Bruce off downtown.
Move Bruce to Historic Irvington, because there's no, no one else signed up who's interested in that.
I'll be happy to...
Then if you want...
That's in addition to code modernization.
Okay, so there you go.
So you're happy with rewriting the whole code anyway?
We might as well, might as well take care of downtown.
You're going to keep the computer copy of the most updated code, Larry, she'll have to...
So, wait, and I'm sorry, now Historic District will be Connie and Bruce?
That's right.
Okay.
That's correct.
You'll update this.
I'll update, yeah.
And you know what would be nice is, well, you probably will, but we, the contact information is in the exchange contact list?
Contact information for...
Any of these...
Well, I have, I have an email list set up for Congress, you know, and that's, well, I don't know if it's accessible by everyone, so.
Then what we're now going to discuss publicly, but there is a list of suggested names that we received. There was some overlap, there were some interesting names, there were some other interesting names, so I think that, I think Larry's passing that out. Perhaps, Larry, if you could email me the, the...
Just for...
I could potentially, potentially take an initial crack, and I think anyone who was nominated by more than one person should be highly considered.
So that list, just so you know what the markings are, the, the list includes, the items that are highlighted are, are ones that I put in what the suggested assignments are for those people, it's just based upon, I think, pretty obvious leanings of those people. But not everyone, the names that were sent to me didn't necessarily have a suggested committee attached, a suggested working group attached to it, so when it did, I put it down, but most of them were blank. And so there were some that I just filled in, I just wanted you to know that I, you know, I'm not dictating where you assign people, but I just, or where you consider people, but I just wanted to point out that certain people, it makes, makes sense as to who they are and what they do.
Can I just make one comment here, that Walter has a suggestion, I forgot to add him to my suggestions, I think, because I'd lost the piece of paper when I was reconstructing my notes to you.
Correct.
But I think it would probably be appropriate to have him on the Broadway corridor since he's working as part of the, no, not just traffic, but the bridge corridor grant. He's one of the three reps for that, so maybe that would be a nice overlap for...
Okay. So as you have other names, pass them along, and then, you know, at some point, we need to, we, well, I guess there's, there's other steps that we're going to talk about tonight in terms of outreach and whatnot, but basically, and I guess we can jump into that, at some point, we're going to discuss tonight a little bit about what we plan to do for outreach for the first public meeting. There's, of course, going to be general, our general announcements about the meeting and whatever publicity we can, we can muster up, but the other part of that would be specific invitations to working group prospects, and that's this list here, so.
Larry, I know that the chairs of the land use committees are on the oversight board. Is there any prohibition against other members of those committees being on working groups?
There's some on this list.
Yeah. No, I don't think so, other than, I don't, is there a quorum issue? I mean, do we have, if there's three members of the planning board on one of these committees' groups, is there any issue with that? They're not there.
Oh, no, I wouldn't do that, I wouldn't have three members of the same board, yeah, then you, because they are conducting business, so that would be...
Yeah, the board.
Pardon? Just a five-member board. Yeah, that would be a problem.
That's the only limitation, though.
If there's not, my name not here, I'm assuming it just got lost in email, because it looks like you put pretty much everybody in?
There were, there were two people that you suggested that didn't come with names, and I didn't yet research who they are. You mentioned...
Oh, I'll talk to you later.
Yeah.
And I don't see my initial, I see a few names I gave, but not, not my initials anywhere. I'm just wanting, was looking to make sure I sent you the email that I thought I sent you.
Make sure you have.
It's possible.
She waited to see everyone else.
You're just sending it again.
Also, one of the things I like about how this is mixing up, and what you said about not three people from the same board, because I think that's, it's important everywhere, but since there is such a robust historic committee, I think it's important that that working group not be just that committee.
Right, you can't be, it's not exactly, it's not, it's going to be that same committee meeting again or something else. But this should be represented, for sure.
I always saw what your, your preferences were, and then the idea that you want to send out an invitation.
No, I sent one to you today, but I just resent this.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, thanks.
Glad to see there were some names that are included in the list.
Yeah, I'll...
So that's...
Nice. Did you have some other steps?
Yeah, there were a couple of memos that I think Larry circulated. One was the, to discuss the working group format, all the meeting format. Since you've just been talking about that, I don't know if you had a chance to look through it. That memo talks about the timeline, it's been revised to reflect the schedule based on input from the committee, having the initial kickoff meeting and then letting the working groups go off and kind of work on their own, and then conduct it around the process. So that's outlined. And then I thought it would be important to frame out some suggested ground rules for how the, that process may work, just to make it easier and as efficient as possible, so I can quickly go through what I've suggested, and then as, if there are additional comments, we can certainly work on those, but again, we're talking about the, the makeup of the working groups, no more than two members of the Board Trustees again for quorum issues, and I think the same issue just came up with other land use groups or other groups within the village that have a quorum of issues. The thought that one of the CBC members, companies, plan committee members would be the chair, or they would have to designate me in the event that they aren't able to attend a particular meeting, so that way somebody's responsible for running...
How is the chair chosen? Are they assigned, or is it voted on by the working committee?
Well, the, it's, it's one of the...
It's one of the CPCs.
One of the CPC members, so you'd have to flip a coin, or arm wrestle, or whatever, however you want to determine who would want to run that particular working group.
But there's only one or two of us, I need to those committees.
Right.
And it turns out there's actually two on each committee.
We have two in each committee.
As the way you just decided.
Yeah, so...
Flip a coin.
Two, yeah, the trustees can decide that, I don't know.
Right. Now, the, the makeup of the working group, you want to have enough members of that, you know, in the event that somebody can't make it, you can still have a meeting, that's the whole point, is to keep the process moving. So the question is, if you have up to seven members for each working group, so that would allow for the process to move fairly quickly. It looks like you've got a fairly substantial list, list already, of people who are suggested prospects.
Prospects.
Right. So, to that, again, think about the makeup of the, the number of the group. Again, after the initial kickoff meeting, the working group should, you know, make every effort as possible, as, to meet as often as possible in order to kind of meet that timeline. The working groups, the meetings aren't public meetings, so they can be held, somebody said, well, what if we want to hold it in my... said, "Well, what if we wanna hold it in my living room?" But that's great, I think, you know, that helps move the process along. All we're asking, I think, is just to let Larry or myself know when the meetings are scheduled, so, so we can kind of keep track on our, on that, after a meeting as conveniently as possible, somebody could provide a draft memo or notes of the meeting, that could be in bullet format, doesn't have to be elaborately detailed. And then, the, the end product should be some type of a memo, again, with identifying the, the working group proposals, and some attempt to prioritize the, the proposals, whether it's long-term, short-term, immediate, intermediate, and if, if possible, to try and form some consensus over those recommendations. It doesn't have to be unanimous, if there are, if there's differences of opinion, that's great, that's fine. That's all, would be brought back to the Comprehensive Plan Committee, and there would be a process where you would go through all of those proposals and vet them yourself, so, but I think it's important that, for this particular stage in the process, to try and form and provide some, some guidelines and some guidance for the working groups, so they can go, go do what they need to do, do it as efficiently as possible, and then come back within a reasonable timeframe. The other part of the, this memo on the working group was a draft letter to the prospective working group members, and this would kind of be their introduction to, "Oh, by the way, you've been volunteered." So, again, it's a draft format, and it attempts to, again, provide some, an outline of what would be expected, and I think it was important, based on the conversations we had previously, to identify that the timeframe is, is a finite timeframe, which we're not asking for a huge commitment, but we are asking for something that's rather focused and should be started and completed within four to six weeks. So, that, that's what I thought would be important for the Comprehensive Plan Committee to think about as far as the working groups. I think that the, the process is really forming up very nicely, and it's a, it's an interesting approach, and I think it will get the, the village where it needs to go as far as the, the output and the input needed to, to move the process forward. So, Larry, did you have any?
Yeah, I mean, we could discuss how you see invitations coming out, I mean, certainly, you know, we can, we can do a, most of these will be by email, I'm guessing, but we can do, we can make contact from my office, or in some cases, it may be that you would prefer to reach out to people individually that you may know, or whatever, and that's up to you, too, so, whatever you prefer.
Well, I don't think it's an either or, I love this letter, but I think the letter should come from Brian to everybody, and then if we want to call people that we've suggested, or, you know.
We know a bit.
We know a bit, but this, having the letter come from you means we are not outbid for suggesting somebody who perhaps, several would admit that we volunteered for the.
Sure.
And it also makes it essential, all, all going at the same time.
And I think, I think we still wanna keep it to that, that five to seven people in a group, right?
Well, we don't have that many people.
Yeah.
So, we're still open to a public meeting where people who aren't assigned yet, the riffraff of the community can come and.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
What I envisioned is kind of having.
That's a good job. If they, if they had riffraff.
No, we don't. What I was just saying, if anyone was awake.
I think that if we have, like, kind of go into those meetings with kind of four, five people, say.
Yeah.
And two other people show up, that'd be perfect, you know, that are really interested in whatever it is.
So, I guess my, uh, my concern is to differentiate, I, I wanna better understand the February 16th meeting versus the March 4th meeting, so.
Well, I see that the February 16th meeting is the information meeting that's gonna give the potential working group members information to help them to decide what group they wanna be part of, and then the March 4th meeting is the first meeting of that group. Well, they're, they're all together in a room, but then they break apart, and that's.
Which meeting is that?
Second meeting, the March, March.
See, that's the problem, 'cause to me, how do you know, part of it, that second meeting was, um, I don't know, I, I actually thought that the, the group, group, wherever, the, the thing was gonna be described, and then the different subgroups were gonna be described, and people could actually go between different groups, I thought that was gonna be effectively a recruiting meeting as well, so.
At the first, at the February meeting?
I guess, I just, I don't know, I, somehow I feel like we have this, we don't, we have, we've either inserted an additional meeting, or we've moved the focus of one meeting from where it should be. Because to me, the introductory meeting, you don't even have the full staffing yet.
Right.
So, it seems to me that would be the meeting appropriate to try to recruit more people.
Yes.
You know?
You do that by, by describing the, the whole project, and you give descriptions of the various segments of the project, the working groups, and then you field questions, and if anyone's interested, please contact us, you know.
So, the idea of being able to sit down and go around and, and like that kind of charrette kind of thing, we, notion we talked about, we, we mentioning, you know, having six, like in the library program room, have six tables, you could go between, talk to the people who are assigned as the leads, the chairs, or the, the two assigned CPC folks would be at the table, and then you could actually get engaged in different conversations to find out if it fit you or not.
I thought that would be sort of what the February 16th meeting.
Well, that's how it's described in.
Yeah, let me just kind of walk through the February 16th, 'cause there's a proposed outline.
Right, that's what I'm reacting to, that doesn't include that in there.
And, and that's the benefit of having this kind of conversation, 'cause perhaps the emphasis is placed in a different area, but my thought was that, my, or my understanding is at least that the first public meeting would probably be in this room, and, you know, you have the ability to, to do a PowerPoint projection, you know, a presentation. There would be kind of an introduction by the mayor, Larry would provide some overview and history, and then I would provide kind of a review of the Comprehensive Plan, existing Comprehensive Plan, and the Comprehensive Plan process, why is the village going through this process now, what, what does it intend to, to get at the end of the process, hooks the goal. There's a little bit of kind of reviewing, well, how have things changed in Irvington since the last Comprehensive Plan? I think that's pretty straightforward, I think it's updating or providing some background as to have some of the planning studies that the village and other regional groups have conducted since the last Comprehensive Plan, provides some context for, for the community. There was one piece where there are a series of implementation measures that the village has gone through since the, the last Comprehensive Plan, and I, I've listed all of them, and I need to work with Larry on indicating which ones have been implemented, and then which ones have left to be implemented, and so, if, there's an issue, do you wanna have that as, as one of the discussion items? Are there things that haven't been implemented that maybe the village, they're not a concern anymore, or it's not a priority, and so they don't need to focus on that? So, that's one piece. And then, Mark, the other piece is getting to the, the working group topic areas, and providing kind of some background as the, the list has been prepared, kind of set initial scope, and going through each of the topic areas, and providing some brief discussion on those working groups, how the process would work, and to solicit potential public involvement, additional public involvement, participating with each of those groups. So, that was kind of the concept at this point. Once you had the, the working groups, then there's that, that whole other process that, that you would go through, that's been outlined, and then, Mark.
What's that other process that?
Well, that's, we're meeting on a.
I'm asking about the March 4th meeting, right, isn't that?
Right, that's the other process where you'd have all of the, the members of the working groups constituted, you would meet, that's, that's the initial kickoff meeting, and then you go through this, the whole working group process, ending with a, a memo that comes back to the, the Comprehensive Plan Committee with a fuller description of the issues and some attempts at prioritization.
Can I imagine that, that March 4th meeting would still allow people that might be on the fence about which committee they met, I think that's what you're talking about, some people might wanna.
Yeah, with.
No, you're already assigned, it's that.
See, that's, we, we missed, and I know that Connie is also supportive of this, and I thought we all were, we wanted a more interactive process for people to get involved with, with select, being, you know, selecting where they wanted to be, I guess that was, and a, and a sense of, well, I, I don't know, we had, we had a fairly long discussion about that kind of first, I thought it would be the first meeting, and how that might operate.
Yeah, I think the, the issue is that we haven't had a chance to allow for kind of the, the fuller evaluation of, of the issues with that working group, so that it's almost a chicken and the egg type of thing, you know, we're, we're trying to set up a process to get people to talk about those specific topic areas, and my, my sense was that perhaps that at the second public meeting, there may be these specific breakout groups where you've got the six groups, and the public can go from one to the other, and these, the CPC members would be part of that, that group, and at that point, there's a much fuller discussion that's been brought out by the, by the working.
It feels like cart before the horse, rather than chicken and the egg, because it seems like, if you're gonna go to this level of detail on the first meeting, don't you, I mean, would you want everyone on, that's involved to, to know that level of detail, not just the hand-selected people that were invited?
Well, no, but the, the people who come into the first meeting are not just the hand-selected people, it's.
Anybody.
It's, it's because there's a, a certain amount of general outreach that we're gonna be doing to the community.
Well, would, would it make sense, the way our meetings are set up, we have a, a work session on the 15th, and then the, the first public meeting on the 16th, would it make sense to almost do this kind of big picture, you know, why we're doing this story on the, on the 15th of the work session, kind of set the stage, and then, say for anyone interested from what we talked about tonight, tomorrow, we're gonna go into more detail into the six areas, so you kind of cover a lot, and we can do a, a brief summary the next day as well, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure enough people would be at the work session.
Hold on, we, that, from what I'm hearing.
Gained.
From what I'm hearing, the only real, the only real difference in the approach here is that the way, the way the first public meeting is outlined, you certainly need to get a background about why we're doing this, you know, in terms of Comprehensive Plans, that's kind of a problem for everyone, but then the only real difference is that, rather than having someone standing up in front of the room describing what each working group is about, you, you'd break out into, into different locations, and you have a series of five, 10-minute talks at each table, led by the Comprehensive Plan Committee members, describing what their working group is all about.
This is on the 16th?
On the 16th, yeah, at the first public meeting, so.
But that's in, in this room right now?
Well, no, it'll, it'll have to be envisioned somewhere, I'm guessing.
So, I see no reason why we could do it that way.
Right, and, and that gives the opportunity, so essentially, the person who's in charge of that table has to give their presentation, or their little quick discussion about their working group, five separate times, because you want people to have a chance to rotate around the room as needed, or as needed.
It's, it's fast daily.
And.
What's that?
Speed dating.
Speed dating, yeah.
And, and at that, so then that gives the opportunity for a more intimate interaction.
So, here's.
That's the only, I think that's the only difference, really, between what you're.
Okay, now, I wanna, I, I, I think that's true, and I think, actually, we, the reason we're talking about that was because people that were on the fence might actually become much more engaged by actually having some skin in the game, by sitting down and speaking and, and getting their issues reflected upon immediately, I think it's a good way of drawing, if we can get people, enough people to come, I mean, we could be having empty tables. But the other thing is, and I wanna get back to, was it Brian or Larry, I'm sorry, like my, about talking about what we could do at, on the 15th beforehand, it seems like some of this, we might actually wanna go ahead and talk to this CPC folks, you know, who are gonna be chairing the little tables, so maybe give them a little bit of, I, I don't know.
They do need the work session.
Right, you know, maybe give them, so they have a little bit of time to think about it, rather than just absorbing what you're gonna present and then being ready to take an audience, you know what I'm saying?
That, that makes sense, and you're not asking volunteers to come to yet another meeting.
No, no, you're just saying the CPC folks come, and, and we can drill down to whatever level to make sure they're all clear about what each group is about, right, 'cause I'm sure there'd be questions anyways, from them even, and from us, as we had today.
And then we might also publicize the meeting for the next day, that people who are on the fence said, "Oh, I saw that great meeting on the 15th, and I would definitely go tomorrow."
So, I, if I could stress, that would probably be a useful addition to it.
Larry, you have to change the, the location on the draft, but. Um, yeah, I mean, I have to think, how would my structure, to be honest with you, it may not, it may not be out of the question to use this room.
On the spread, just.
Yeah, it'll just be set up on tables.
The only other option is the library, I suppose, but.
Yeah.
And then it's a question of recordability, it would be good to have your official presentation recorded, so that people could refer to it.
Well, the library could record as well, but it's, I think.
I think.
We'll figure it out, but I think, but I think that addresses what the concern was about having your interaction, that you're a, well, we can still, but I think the, the items leading up to that last, essentially, that last item on this list, it's just gonna be done in a breakout session as opposed to, as a presentation to a full room, you know, it'll be done separately.
Yeah, it also has to be described a little bit more precisely, that last one is a little budgy, yeah.
Yeah, but the items leading up to it still need to happen, because I think people who are here, I mean, I, I don't think everyone knows exactly what a Comprehensive Plan is about, why we're doing an update, why, how we're not doing a whole new one, what's, you know, where we were, where we're going.
And I do like the idea of coming up with a list of what hasn't been implemented yet, based on the previous Comprehensive Plan, and there may be very good reasons why the things were not implemented.
Yeah, I think I already did that for Genesis benefit, I remember, I, I did it, like, in writing in the margins of a piece of paper, but it, but it was, it was done.
Also, I think whenever possible, of course, many of these people were suggested for particular working groups, and I think if the letter goes out inviting them to a particular working group, but also indicating, like, just adding a phrase, or any of the others listed here, that you may be, you know, interested in.
They should be coming to the 16th, and if they wanna jump.
Yeah, but so, the le, the letter now says you've been suggested as someone who may be interested in joining the blank working group, or joining one of the working groups, join the blank working group, or any of the working groups that may.
Please come on the 16th.
And also, I agree with you that, and, and Brian, you said this, that if people who are on this list wanna jump in, that would be great, but I think they have to commit to one of the working groups for, they can't just, like, la, la into, you know, one meeting, one meeting of another group.
No, no, you have to be locked in one.
No, 'cause after the, after that meeting of the 16th, the, the work that we have done is we've gotta assign people to work members.
And then they can make a.
Decide who's gonna be on it.
Yes.
And then, by the way, should be, there should be a meeting of the whole Comprehensive Plan Committee, not just the, the Board of Trustees.
Oh, right.
Is that an open meeting, or is that a, a vice of council meeting, or some, you know what I'm trying to say, where if we start sorting people, like, it's the sorting.
Yeah, well, I, I think usually when you, when you pick people for committees and stuff, you do an executive session, don't you?
Yeah, it could be executive session.
Okay.
We're volunteer temporary.
I think that's totally appropriate, yeah.
I think.
Yeah, you mentioned the 15 wanting onto the on one working group.
Right.
And, you hear, now everyone's gonna be pointed.
We don't have a smart hat.
You have to sort.
Yeah, I think there should be an executive session.
That's right. We worked through it, I think we got there. What else, Larry?
Yeah, no, that's, that's not gonna be helpful, go through this, kind of provide a.
Okay, what, I'm sorry, weren't you also gonna talk about outreach?
Right.
Talk about that today, hot.
So, we talked about it, well, we talked about the. So we talked about it, well, we talked about the specific invitations, I got that. As far as other outreach, I think we started to touch on that in the last work session. We have our standard channels that we use, but I don't know how much further. I think people talked about, you know, trying to get a newspaper article done or something like that. You know, I've already had a conversation just yesterday with the River Journal, for example. But, I mean, I think the goal would be to try to reach newspapers as well, and see what they'll cover this, when they cover it, I don't know, that's up to them.
I know, there's gotta sort of be an angle to it, you know what I mean? There's gotta be, there's gotta be something that is.
Should we make it controversial?
Well, I mean, I can see the lead, you know. Yeah, or.
I think Airbnb would be an angle.
Where are we gonna stick the parking garage, where, maybe it was gonna Airbnb, and party sites? And the other one, you know, we've had several failures of larger-term projects along the Broadway corridor. So it's obvious the community wants something, you know, not large development in that kind of corridor.
So to say, which big box store do you want on Broadway, am I?
Well, I think people would draw the enterprise to actually put it in the time and fashion. I think something like Airbnb is a catch that.
Well, it's come up in the context of the hotel tax.
Yeah, we want a hotel.
Cover it that way, I don't know, so we can make.
Let's convert the tax building to a hotel. So I guess the question is.
A favor?
Yes, Jeff, you're listening?
This may actually be fun, this could be fun.
So is someone gonna try to reach out to Tim?
Sure.
Do you want to, or you want me to, or?
I'd be happy to, it seems like they're talking to a lot of reporters today, it seems like they're looking for stories, so we'll give them one.
But it's got absolutely kind of edge.
Yeah, we need an angle. I think you're right, I think.
Like you're leaking something.
Yeah, exactly. I gotta meet you personally.
In the parking garage.
But I do think that, you know, kind of with the backdrop of the Broadway development, I mean, to think about what's really dominated our meetings the last several years, literally since I got on board. First we had the water front zoning, which was from the comprehensive plan, you know. Then we've had, you know, change to zoning, which this would preempt in a lot of ways. So I think that that is the angle, that kind of trying to get ahead of those contentious issues and kind of figure out what the community wants in each of those contentious areas is kind of the big one. So I, I'll let Tim slant it all he wants with his yellow journalism, but I think that there is a story, I think there is a story based on the other stories and how this would have affected Continuum or.
And now, this connects to real life, this isn't just some, you know, comprehensive plan, you know, which is something that lives on a piece of paper and its desk, you know. This is something that's gonna affect how the village is run, what happens in the future, what's permitted.
So it's a once-in-a-decade or even longer opportunity to really have an impact on the future and where its direction the village goes, and I think that's, you know, and I think the backdrop of some of the contentious issues and some of the meetings we've had where this is packed to the rafters is enough to, you know, hopefully get some juice to the story.
And I do like, the other positive factor is it's good to get the community input, for instance, on what does everyone see as for, because this is, there's a component to this, one of the groups is kind of parallel to the, again, the bridge group, the new New York Bridge Transportation Corridor. And I think the issue there is that we don't even know what the three members representing the village are, really sure what the community wants, so it's a nice overlap, at least for myself and Walter on this one, to better understand what the issues might be. I'm not saying that's a good sales tactic for Tim, probably that's too inside, but the other one with the rezoning and the large, you know, what should be the focus on Broadway and stuff like that, that's a good.
Yeah, as well as, I mean, I do think the historic district stuff is important, because you think about whatever it was 10 years ago with the Main Street Committee, there was some, that was pretty contentious. It was before our time, but I remember that being, you know, ugly enough that they kind of abandoned it many months ago. So, you know, I think that as we're getting ready to hear from the Historic District Committee again, it could potentially be our, you know, our new forest fire that we could be fighting, so.
I do want to look.
Potentially.
So are you gonna do one in the deniers' letters?
Yeah.
We'll do all the traditional, so to speak.
Is there any other kind of outreach we can get, though, because that is an electronic?
Town prayer, you can do a mailing anytime you want.
Well, that is expensive, right? I mean, it ends up being.
And really, we have no indication, I think it works at all.
I'm wondering if there's any outreach that could be done through, okay, I'm gonna throw out a couple examples, don't crucify me, but like the schools to.
Backpack everything home, I think.
Something, or maybe the churches, religious institutions, I mean, something mentioned, because there's a lot of outstanding specifically involved peoples that could be communicated to, just, oh, by the way, the village is doing this, and, you know, it's kind of, on the rubric of an age of involvement, right? If you feel disenfranchised by the politics of the moment, get involved in something constructive for your community.
We did that with the affordable housing bigger group. We invited representatives of the clergy and the school, and they were very receptive to being involved in these kinds of issues. We could certainly let them communicate it, but out to their own constituents, and that'd be really good. I think that's a great way of, rather than beating the mailer to death, you know.
It's also free. Good, if anyone has other, you know, ideas on how to publicize this, be afraid to reach out. Who had Paul Fineerson on his email, he can react to his emails. Anything else, Rob, is that?
No, I've got practice.
Yeah, there you go. You're good?
So when, one day, maybe you said it and I didn't see it, but if a particular working group wants your input, I mean, is that part of the rules that you were setting up, that they could just read?
Yeah, I think they had something in here, if you need to, if you need to tap into, you need to get information or if you want to attend a meeting.
To resolve something?
Yeah, yes, I can.
I think if it's not in there, it should be, because I think that would be useful.
Yeah, that was the notion that we, that's the way we structure it.
Yeah, and that's, so just keeping us advised as to when meetings are, so that.
I could see there could be some expertise questions that would make you some experience and background.
Yes, and the point was to use my time as efficiently as possible, so that I'm not going to multiple meetings. It's when there's a request for specific information, or if you need me to come in and kind of walk through, either just do that.
Exactly, okay, good, good, thank you.
Nice. Larry, I'll be touched, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, everyone's favorite time of the year, overread the 2017-18 Village Operating Budget.
Well, is that part of my job as a trustee?
Yeah, you could go.
You're right, this should take too long. What I have before you is a small packet, the first page is a calendar, and it gives you the dates of the various meetings between now and April, and it gives you which department heads will be coming to the meetings to present your budgets.
I'll put their heads.
No, yeah, but anyway, so let's turn the page and let's review what we're facing with the tax cap. We've been compliant every year since the inception of the tax cap. As you recall, it's still at off with a 2% cap on the levy. However, it's always whichever is lower, the inflation rate or the tax cap of 2%. Happy to report that the increase for this year is up from last year. Last year, the village had worked with the lowest cap in the history since the inception of the cap last year, so very, very low. This year, it's up significantly compared to last year, it's 1.15%. But let me go over the calculation on the second page. It starts off with the last year's levy, then it gives you a base growth factor, and it's based on how much the village has grown, how much the assessed values have grown, and the number comes from the comptroller's office, and it's at a little bit over 1%. So it gives you a 1% increase off the bat, and on the right-hand margin, it gives you what that translates in levy dollars.
Now, I'm a little confused, this doesn't, isn't in sync with the reappraisals, because they haven't.
It's independent of that, the reappraisals are bringing the values to, or that's for dispersing the levy or collecting the tax. That's how we're gonna collect it, based on the values. This is on, do you have any more?
But to the extent, but to the extent that the revaluation discovered improvements that hadn't previously been assessed, that may flow through these numbers eventually. I don't think these numbers reflect the revaluation just yet.
But they will next year, most likely.
Yeah, they could, but I, we don't know how that's gonna affect it, I think theoretically it could. This really reflects, you know, this is not changes in assessed valuation, changes in value of someone's house. This is changes in the real hard improvements on the ground.
Right, added to the village value.
Right, so it's, in theory, and we won't talk about that here in Irvington, but in theory, if you had a community that had 100 new homes built, this number here would reflect that your tax base grew by 100 homes, and therefore you should have the relief to be able to expand your services, your municipal services, for all those new people that are living here. Now, that doesn't apply here in Irvington, as you know, but there are expansions of homes, so real increases in area which allows, in theory, more people to live, which is reflective in this number here.
But we do have new projects, like we have Stern's Ridge being built out, we have.
Well, mine are.
Marker Ridge, which is.
These are, these are, what's driving this are the additions and things like that that's really driving these numbers, it's not the new homes. There are some, yeah, and there will be some. These numbers are not really reflective of large numbers of homes being built.
And they're set each year on a community-by-community basis, is that?
Right, you go to the website from the state comptroller, it goes, you know, by county, and it lists Irvington specifically.
So our tax base increased just a little bit over 1%.
Yeah.
Based upon new construction, so to speak, so.
Okay.
So what it translates to really is being able to, they provide for us to increase our levy by $143,000 based on that. So if you move down, the next component is the allowable levy growth. And that's what's given to anyone developing a budget for the same timeframe, from June 1st to May 31st, and that's 1.15%. So based on that, it gives us another $159,000 of levy increase that will be permissible. If you go down, the next component is we have levy that we did not use prior year carried forward. So there was a part of the amount that we didn't utilize, and we kept it for this year, which we may or may not use. You could also keep some in reserve for subsequent years, but it allows us another $87,000.
So the other 87,000 goes into reserve for future years?
Well, we used 87 last year about, I think we used about half last year. So we had remaining from last year's accumulated amount, 87,000, that we're bringing forward.
Oh, this is an, okay, got it, got it, sorry.
That's what's being carried forward from last year.
From last year.
It has nothing to do what fraction that we're using this year's?
No.
No, yeah, we're, yeah, we're just trying to figure out how much we have to use.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Right, deciding what to use.
So basically, what that gives us is a total of $390,059. So then, when you see projected levy, that's the same, and there is no projected levy, that's with a level. This is just giving us the amount that we can increase the levy that will be permissible under the tax cap. And it gives also a percent, that is increasing our levy by 2.85%.
That we could, not that we will.
Right.
Right, so we start off with the budget to see what the allowable amount is. We start from the two S, what's the allowable amount, and then what it needs the village. So now that we see what the allowable amount is, let's turn to the next page. And what I've done here is I've summarized the changes that we're seeing in next year's budget. So I think the biggest change, when you look it over, is really benefits and salaries. I don't know if at this time you really wanna go specifically, but we do have a decrease in debt service just due to debt principal paydown, that's a good thing. Health insurance, that's a really large driver of the increase that we're looking at. We have, in this current year, we have a total of four retirements. And what that means is four additional medical policies that need to be written. When those people go into retirement, we still pay for those policies, and we're actually then adding when new people are hired. Offsetting that are some lower salaries for people that are starting. But nonetheless, in the health insurance line, I have those extra ones to account for. We also anticipate potentially the retirement of three people next year and one additional staff person. So it includes seven new policies over last year's budget. This past year, on medical insurance premiums, they went up, combined, they went up about 8%, that's including retirees who are at a different rate than active employees. The active employee premium went up 12%, that was for 2016. What we're projecting for next year is a combined amount of about 9%. We don't know what the rate will be, that only comes out, let's say, after the second half of the year. But right now, we're projecting a 9% amount increase. On the next page, I did do a, I can go round down these items if you wish. I also did a little narrative on the next page that you can look at later, that's a salary and insurance chart.
Before we get onto the next page, just.
We're happy to go down this list.
The particulars are clear, but the, so we're looking at 558 increases, and we're 168 over what we're allowing?
So what we're looking at is a total increase, increases are projected right now at 558,000. Our allowable cap is 390, so it gives us $168,000 over the cap that we're looking at right now.
And if we go over the cap, what's the consequences of that?
Well, first of all, to exceed the cap, you need to just simply pass a resolution.
Oh.
So it's not a vote, like the schools have to deal with, just us. But I believe it would also affect the ability for your residents to receive rebate checks, there's certain rebate checks that are.
The bribes.
Yeah.
Those rebate checks are going down anyway, but.
Yeah, I think it was over, there were, I don't remember specifics.
I'd have to look back to see, they are diminishing.
Yeah, it was a limited window that was called the tax freeze, is what they called it, so.
I still haven't received my complete, I mean, I didn't. I'm in the system, it hasn't been mailed yet, so don't wait.
It's also always great when you have a 9% average increase in health insurance.
Can we, but also, we could offset, I'm looking back at this, I'm sorry, looking back at the 87,385 number?
That's already factored into the 390 that you have to use.
That's using up all our carryover.
390 is the maximum.
So we have no carryover?
No, we wouldn't, you wouldn't have any carryover if you.
If you adopted at this, what you're looking at now, we don't say we're adopting, this is what I'm looking at, this is the challenge we're looking at at the moment.
So Brenda, last year at this time, what was that number, over, under number?
Better.
It was better than this, yeah.
I don't seem to remember, but we were, we were.
Closer to striking distance.
How about?
So with the lower tax cap number, or lower amount number, we were still.
We had a growth factor as well that helped out, we had a lower, much lower cap, and we were closer to striking distance.
So I don't see a lot of.
So I don't see a lot of revenue lines on here? Have you, have you looked at any potential increases in revenue or decreases in revenue?
Right. Larry and I did look at revenue. We increased a number of them last year. Did not see much potential. I would say about $25,000 increase. Maybe.
Yeah.
That was, we're pretty much sales tax, we, you know, we increased it. We're, it's coming in as projected, that's substantially higher than projected. Mortgage tax, a little bit stronger. That would be one of the areas with the potentially increase.
And the building permits and stuff like that for the builder department, that's pretty well maxed out now.
Well, yeah, building permits is a little bit unusual, and we'll, we'll get into this more, obviously.
This is not looking for a silver lining here.
Right, yeah, no, I'm sorry. So with building permits, we have a budget of 230,000. Now, this past year, we exceeded 400,000. So you might think, well, hey, there's lots of room there, but there's a $140,000 Artsy Country Club building permit in there, and that's not going to happen next year. Now, there may be certain things that happen next year, like Marker Ridge. But that's one year, so you have to consider how you handle your budget when you have a one-year, you know, bump like that. What, what we did just yesterday, as a matter of fact, is we took, with the building inspector, we took a 16-year average of the number of permits and the dollar value of those permits, and arrived at a.
An average.
An average dollar amount per permit, and then we used the number of permits as a projection next year, again, based upon a 16-year average. And that revenue number is somewhere in the high 200, high 100s.
190, I think.
Around 190.
Which is less than what?
Which is less than what we have in the budget, so we don't feel comfortable bumping the budget up any further. Now, the reality is, we probably are going to exceed 230,000 next year, especially with the large project that I mentioned and just the general overall activity. But the 16-year average takes into account the, well, one very deep economic recession with, with low numbers, and so we think that that's an appropriate way to approach this because if you, if you continually count on the fact that you're going to have
Right.
significant economic development or construction in your village, you're eventually going to get burned by it. Could you, could you look at it as a one, if you, if you increased your 230,000 up to 300,000, you really would be looking at a one-time situation. You'd probably be sitting here next year knowing that you have to take your 300 and bring it back down to probably 190, you know, next year. So you have to really weigh all that out, and that's, that's part of what we'll talk about.
So these increases, though, are increases. I mean, there's, these are not transient. These are new baseline for the, effectively, for the budget.
These are, Brenda's best estimate of these major items. And don't even, they don't take into account your discussions with the departments. You haven't done any work on these, but some of these, some of these, there's not much to work on. You know what I mean? You have union contracts, you're providing.
No, I know, that's the point. That's what I mean, but it's kind of the new baseline, in a sense.
Yeah, yes, a lot of these are that, but, but again, the, how you, how you make this work under the tax cap, you know, is, is what you'll be doing over the next month and a half, so. But that's the picture that we wanted to give you is, is the, the overview, and, and you have that in the back of your mind as you sit and listen to your departments and, you know, deal with the various types of items. It's context.
So how, how, how was Derby?
How was Derby? I was in bad shape, as I was saying. Well, I think.
I don't remember the number being this, that large last year.
Right, it's worse than last year.
It's definitely worse.
Not as bad as a few years ago.
It's not as bad as I've seen another year. I've seen 268,000, right.
We did, we did have strong year.
You know, it's one of those things. On the policies, an average family policy is about $25,000. More than $25,000. Will everyone have a family policy? Maybe someone has an individual policy, so, you know, it's one of the, you know, those are the.
Yeah, things get fine too.
You know, we find, as, as you go along, you know.
But again, as we're sitting here today, and this is, this is.
This is the best, this is the.
The magnitude in our world.
Right.
I, look, I wouldn't characterize this as a disaster.
It's not, no.
You haven't done one ounce of work on this one, so.
And we've given up, all right?
You're right.
Right, this is just the very sweet shot.
This is, this is, this is the way we're, this is framing all the hard work that's coming next, so.
This is kind of baseline where we're starting. Let's guess.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Doesn't get us just April, just rubber stamp it and do some work.
New York State Retirement, right, the rates there are pretty level. What I do have to project there is if any increases are given, when they're given, I'm going to get a bill then for retirement contributions based on the new number. So then, and here we are, it's really, this is the fourth year that we are out of contract with the police department. So the numbers start, we've accrued things in the past, but the numbers start getting more difficult the further number of years you're out, because you have to set aside, you know, monies, and you're trying to anticipate. It's also the third year that the CSEA contract expires. It's the third budget. And non-union employees have not received increases either. This will be the third year. So it's, it's, it's a lot to keep track of. We are, we're keeping track of how much we anticipate, because eventually, there is a settlement of some sort.
Which may involve retroactive.
Which will be retroactive those number of years. So those are the items that we're looking at.
Obviously, the first look is always the hardest look, yeah.
Well.
So before we get to reports of board standing committees and officers, we actually have another item. I'm sure we can see the door and see, I don't want to copy this, but the authorization for purchase.
Yeah, no, I don't think.
Can you get it?
Yeah, okay.
The authorization for purchasing property located behind the permits road.
Caught me off guard here. So the answer is yeah, let's do it?
Pretty much.
Thank you.
Mary Ann and Larry, a lead discussion.
Well, this was, this was the agreement that the board entered into in March that in exchange for some of the property, agreeing that the current seller or any future owners won't come after the village to clean up the, the side of the landfill, which is, will all be un-village property now, but, but it still doesn't mean somebody couldn't want the village to clean it up because they want to build something. So in exchange for that and $90,000, the village will get a roughly, almost three-acre site, adjoining village property for $90,000. That was the agreement we came to, and this just would say authorize Larry and me to sign whatever documents we need to, to, you know, close on the deal.
The timely pieces that the subdivision's been approved, so.
The subdivision's been approved.
It's moving things along now.
Right.
And also.
Declaration's about to be filed. I'm going to have to get the mayor's team in charge tonight. I have the property owner's team in charge.
The village acquired land is supposed to remain open space or something like that?
Yes.
Passive recreation.
Except for maybe some parking.
Yeah.
You know.
So it's added to our historic Irvington Woods.
Agreed.
And the other, well, the other part of the subdivision was that the remaining parcel can, can't be further subdivided, so only one house could be built.
This was a very good deal.
Yeah, it was. It was, it is a good deal for the time.
Additional tax revenue from the new house, actually.
So, yeah, this is just.
Basically, yes, I'll read it. Whereas the Beacon subdivision has provided for an agreement between Uni Equities Providers Corporation and the bills of Irvington did in March 6, 2016, received final subdivision approval from the Irvington Plaid Board on January 4, 2017, and whereas the agreement provides that upon subdivision, the bills will purchase Lot 2 for $90,000 submitted to the Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes the village administrator and village attorney to execute any documents necessary to the purchase of Lot 2, and further authorizes the clerk treasurer to make the payment of $90,000 plus any closing adjustments. I'll make a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you, Mary Ann, for your work on this. Appreciate it.
What a roller coaster. Next up, reports of boards, standing committees, and officers. Trustee liaison reports.
The only thing that I know of right now, I'm sorry, I'm still a little bit of a daze. I don't know what's going on at the moment with the issues on staffing with the ECB. I don't know if any names came forward or if any further outreach was done by the two remaining members or not, so that's, don't have news there. The, on the tree commission, there's still need staffing, but they are working in response to several things that, that have come forward, including some recommended trees from Main Street that, they're putting together a shortlist to give to Larry and TPW folks. I'm trying to think what else is going on. The traffic committee is, was on hiatus, but they'll be meeting at the end of the month, coming back out of, I don't know what, Queasence State, getting more active now that they, the beginning of the year is happening, and that's it. Larry?
The Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee met as we did tonight. They may still be meeting for it. The Irvington Woods Committee is meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at the rec center. Ongoing programs include youth baseball and softball registration. We're looking for sponsors for the teams. If you want to sponsor, please contact Angela Thornton at the rec. And winter session registration continues as well. There's a new Irvington Trails map. It's beautiful. I've seen it, and it's, it's laminated, so you can even carry it with you. It's available at the rec center or at Village Hall. And stay tuned for announcements about teenscape and daycare.
Excellent.
Nothing for my.
Quick one for Connie on the Highway Department. We're up to five winter storms, the biggest being storm number four, which was the 7th of January. We had about five inches of snow. Other than that, still recycling Christmas trees, so if you want to, if you still have your Christmas tree in your house, you should take it out because it's dry.
Is it fire resistant?
Yeah, exactly right. Please don't smoke near it, but put it out by the curb. No bags, no tinsel, no ornaments, no living animals on it. That's it.
Yeah, well, I would want to just publicly comment that I, that big storm, they did a great job clearing the roads.
As always.
We were up in Mount Kisco, you know, in the late part of the morning. Had started snowing on our way up, on our way down. It was treacherous until we reached Irvington, and then the roads were clear at that point. I mean, I know it got a little worse as time went on, but it was nice to be home. I had a sigh of relief when we finally hit some blacktop.
Yeah. I had the same, just echo exactly, not Mount Kisco, but the same experience.
Yes, I think it was one of those where we didn't really expect it to be that bad. It was supposed to just kind of be a dusting, I think, and it kept going, so. Appreciate the effort.
There was some local communities who appeared to be asleep at the plow, shall we say.
This could be dangerous on itself.
Village Administrator's report. Village Clerk Treasurer's report.
Nothing further.
Village Attorney.
We have to do something.
Gold.
Come back up. We implemented this week an application for the parking meters at all the Hudson Park pay stations.
Excellent.
So they're working and haven't heard any complaints, so I think people, I don't know if they use them off check. That's being implemented.
Did you want to make mention of Eileen?
I will, yeah. We're happy for Eileen, but it's our, you know, sadness on our end here that Eileen Calontuno has announced her retirement. Yeah, so her last day is next week, the, on Thursday, the 26th. We'll have a little lunch here in the office on Wednesday, and you're all welcome to stop in if you're around.
Well, congratulations, Eileen. Good luck.
She's worked for the village for 21 years.
Wow.
Yeah.
But she definitely will be missed. She's a lot of knowledge and really dedicated staff person. Always a pleasure to have every day.
We'll work with her.
Do we have a replacement in line?
Not yet.
We need to hire from the list, so we're in the process. Village Attorney's report. Public comment, last chance. Review of action items.
I didn't know any other than all the conference and stuff, but.
That's all I had to do. I didn't have anything else. Motion to adjourn. Can I have a second?
That's you.
All in favor? You just need me, right?
Did you need a sharpie or?
No, he doesn't sign his mileage.
Oh, okay.
You're specializing early on.